Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will call to order, please. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you. First up is Committee of the Whole closed meeting.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George, the council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole closed meeting to consider the following item: litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, Homestead Land Holdings Limited, 5157 Queen Street, 18 Queen Street, and 282 Ontario Street.
And that carries. And that carries. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So we were just, prior to 6:45, we were just in the Committee of the Whole closed meeting. So I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Holland, the council rise from the Committee of the Whole closed meeting without reporting and reconvene once again in the Committee of the Whole closed session to complete the agenda prior to adoption of the bylaws.
Okay, next we have the approval of the added. We just have a communications item. Can I have a mover for the added, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor George. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 1, Report Number 70. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a conflict of interest in these matters. I, Ryan Bohm, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 8, Report Number 68. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a conflict of interest in this matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other disclosures of pecuniary interest, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening, we have no delegations, we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, seeing none, we have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. But we do have one deferred motion. So the following motion was deferred from the July 10, 2018 council meeting. This is Item 1, or Clause 1, application for a zoning bylaw amendment, 821 Berwick Road. Counselor Ostroff.
I would, thank you, Mayor Patterson, I would like to submit this as an official correspondence as well for planning. I want to take this opportunity to stand or speak for my fellow residents of Countryside on this particular application and urge us to uphold or ratify the planning committee's decision to deny the application. But first, I do want to say that I do respect the applicant and I empathize with them. This is a good and valued business in our community, and I regret that it has come to this point. We have much to learn from this situation. I am not suggesting that the applicant would disregard the restrictions set forth in this zoning bylaw amendment, but it is hard for me to understand why they would even bother to continue with the application, as the restrictions effectively prevent, in my opinion, the business from operating properly or efficiently. But I know it is their right, and here we are this evening. I also respect the work of planning staff on this application and finding a way to accommodate the applicant and their business at this location. As we have all read from our reports, it seems to me that we have an issue with interpretation. This is a problem with many applications within Countryside. Despite our lands being designated rural, many areas are primarily residential. The type of industrial contracting business at the center of this application simply does not belong here at this location. It is incompatible with the surrounding land uses. The clearest way I can put this is that this application attempts to put a square peg in a round hole, and it makes for an impossible situation for both the applicant and the area residents. Furthermore, the area residents do not deserve this type of interference in their quiet country life, and both the official plan and the provincial policy statement protect them from this type of interference. This particular property and its main amenity structure were never meant to support an industrial contracting operation. It is time to uphold the essence of the official plan at this location. The official plan prescribes movement to more suitable locations. For too long, we in Countryside have not been given adequate consideration within the context of the official plan. This application, in my opinion, compromises the values of this rural community and the needed freedoms of such a business to reach its fullest potential. I will commit to working tirelessly with the applicant and the planning department to find the right place for this business and many, many more like it. So to wrap it up, I would ask that we uphold the decision of the planning committee for the reasons and the rationale submitted and for what I have shared with you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor George?
Your worship, through you. As I ask this question a lot, and I just want confirmation again, because I have had some email back and forth with Ms. Paige Agnew, and I just want to confirm again that when her staff went through the preparation of this report and identified what you could support in this application, and you were looking at the OP as a whole, as we hear over and over again, because everybody can cherry pick specific sections that can speak either in opposition to or in favor of whatever it is you're proposing, but you have to look at it as a whole. Again, I'll ask the same question as I normally usually do. Do you feel that this can be supported and argued strongly if it goes before the tribunal, I guess now that it would be, and not the OMB, but through the tribunal, if they so choose to go that route?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, through you, your worship. Yes, that's correct. Certainly, staff would have looked at not only the provincial policy statement, but the official plan as a whole, comprehensively looking at the intention of the designation and the policies that are in there as part of preparing our land use planning recommendation related to these applications.
Thank you, and I think for to that, I'll wait till the chairs.
Sorry, Ms.
I think further to that, I don't know about anybody else, but I've had, I think, three local residents who have shown opposition to this by sending emails to myself with their rationale for being non-supportive of it. But we also have in our correspondence a list of 21 local residents in that same area who are very supportive of it. And I hate to bring this up, but I think the previous speaker, and the previous speaker may want to call me out on this if I'm wrong, but went through a very similar application on Mackay Road some years ago in a very residential area, and very similar rights were granted to that individual as well. So to sit here and say somebody else shouldn't be given the same privileges, I find hard to swallow. So I'm supportive of what staff has brought forward, and if there is opposition by those very few residents who don't feel it's appropriate, they have the same opportunity as anyone else to appeal this and allow it to go through to the tribunal and allow them to make the final decision. But when we have our specialists in the planning department telling us that they can certainly support it and argue that it's the right thing and it can be supported by looking at the OP as a whole, I think that it's the advice to take. And I'm not a planner, I'm not going to argue against, I try never to do that, so I would look to the chairs to how we would be voting anyways to deny what the planning committee is putting forward, so this can be given reconsideration here at council. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on my list is Counselor Neal.
Just very query briefly. Previous speaker, I know, mentioned 21 signatures on a petition attached to the principal planner's letter. If I could read what they signed for, it was statement of support for backyard fence to continue operating at 1821 Berwick Road. I'm not sure that that's a ringing endorsement of the development that's proposed. It's support for a fence. And so I was a little puzzled at its connection to the report and its attachment to the principal planner's letter. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Counselor Neal, can you just restate that argument? I didn't quite understand it.
There is, and I was puzzled over this. There's a petition with 21 signatures, as my colleague mentioned, attached to the letter that was sent to us by the principal planner, but what they signed is a statement of support for backyard fence to continue.
So backyard fence is the company that operates there?
My comment was, I'm not sure. I don't see that this petition is necessarily a ringing endorsement of the proposal. It puzzled me.
That's fine, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Through you, I sit on the committee, I'm the vice chair of planning, and it was a difficult decision, but I was the only one that voted for this recommendation. And my recommendation, or my thinking was, it was recommended, same as Counselor George, is it was recommended by staff. They've looked at this, they've studied this, and if we go cherry picking, it makes it very difficult to know all the details. And I'm going to support it. It is difficult for the neighbors, and I understand that. We've been through a lot of these, and it is difficult, and I'm very sorry for the neighbors. But if we stop preventing economic development until we have another plan of where these people are going to go, I can't stop this. So, thank you, I'm supporting this.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair.
You, just a couple of questions for staff. The first question is, just so I understand the implication of this, that is it correct that this zoning bylaw amendment would legalize the activities that are already happening on the property? So it's not necessarily something that would allow for an expansion, it's more to ensure that everything that is happening is in conformance with our existing policies? Is that correct?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So that's correct. Through the amending zoning bylaw that staff put forward as part of the recommendation, it really ties down the commercial business that is already existing there to ensure that it remains limited in scale, right down to regulating the actual number of employees that can work at that facility, excluding outdoor storage. And again, this will be subject to site plan control, which puts an additional level of regulatory control on the property beyond what exists now.
Okay, so just as a follow-up, if council was to deny this application, then effectively the business would have to close. Is that correct?
Thank you, and through you. So the business would continue to be operating from a position of non-compliance, so depending on whether or not the applicant decided to file an appeal of council's decision and went through the appeals tribunal for a final decision. If for some reason that wasn't supported and they were still operating in a non-compliant business related to their zoning, then the city would be in a position where we would need to enforce, and that would potentially include them having to relocate, yes.
Okay. So I just want to clarify, this is actually a very serious situation, because we're basically talking about whether a business can continue to operate or not. And I'm not trying to dismiss the concerns, and I appreciate what Counselor Ostroff has brought forward. I guess I'm just trying to find what I believe is the right balance in the approach. So my feeling is that it would be better if council, if staff believe that this is in conformance with the official plan and the zoning, would be to approve that, but to ensure that the site plan process can be used to try to address as many of the concerns of the neighbors as well. This is a process that we have used before, when we're trying to thread the needle between the concerns of, in this case, the business and the surrounding neighbors. I know it's not always perfect, but in my view, I think that that's the better implication. Again, this is just my understanding. Obviously, I haven't heard from all the neighbors beyond the correspondence that we have here, but my feeling is that we need to tread carefully, given the potential implications down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the.
Okay, next on my list is Counselor Stroud, and then Counselor Osenek. Counselor Stroud.
Thanks. It's not often that planning committee votes against an application that is recommended by staff. Therefore, I can understand why Counselor George and Counselor Turner feel the way they do. But maybe I'll just ask the director of planning a question, and I think we know the answer to, but it needs to be asked in this situation, is it an ordinary occurrence? Is it within the bounds of normal behavior for a planning committee to vote down an application?
I'm not sure if that's a fair question of staff to answer, so that's probably a better question for council.
All right, I'll ask the clerk. Mr. Clerk, is council, or is this planning committee, does the planning committee sometimes deny applications?
Mr. Clerk.
Here, Mr. Mayor, I don't provide that answer. That's a council decision and a planning committee decision. And what I will say is that planning committee does have the ability to either approve or deny an application. Ultimately, council makes the decision.
Right, and that's the decision that we're...
If you'd like to ask me the question, I could probably give you the answer. I'm just offering it.
Well, if you would like to answer the question, because I know you were once chair of planning, why don't you tell me what you would say?
So I would say that it doesn't occur very often.
Yes, and it did happen once before in this term with an application in my district, and I know the residents of my district, hundreds of them, were very grateful that we had a planning committee for that particular application. And I'm sure that that's the case with Counselor Ostroff's residents, that are hoping that, you know, planning committee is an avenue for them to voice their concerns. That's why we have public meetings at planning committee. The meetings are open to the public, members of the public can make submissions, the members listen to all submissions, and then vote yea or nay. I mean, I'm saying it, we all know how it works, but I think it needs to be said. So the question is, does council agree with the planning committee's decision to vote against staff's recommendation? Like the mayor just said, it doesn't happen very often. So the question is, why did it happen in this case? And I think we have enough information at our fingertips to know why. The reason is because this use is actually above and beyond what a beginning company, a backyard company, or a home business would normally look like, with the number of employees and the size, the number of trucks going in and out. I was not at planning committee, maybe I can now ask, I guess, the chair of planning, were there members of the public that spoke in opposition or in favor of this at planning committee, and what kind of things did they say?
Counselor Neal?
I'm happy to, both the received and the people who came in delegation, the majority of them, in fact, did express those concerns that are also expressed in the rationale that Counselor Ostroff provided for us. So yeah, the majority, I would say the vast majority of people who came in delegation spoke with those concerns.
Counselor Ostroff, do you have something to add? You were at the committee, or were you waiting for a turn to speak?
So I'm not trying to close this down, but generally speaking, this is a bit of a slippery slope if we start asking questions of everybody on the committee. So I think the question to the chair was fine. Counselor Ostroff, I'm not trying to take away your opportunity to respond, but I think that that's as far as we should go.
All right, I'll put things up then. Yeah, so we've got a planning decision that was contrary to the staff recommendation. We've got a motion now to consider that has rationale based on the official plan and the provincial policy statement, planning rationale, why the planning committee said no, just as we did with another time, the planning committee said no. I think that's the correct procedure, I think that's what we've been told. I've looked at both sides, I've heard the arguments, and in this case, I'm going to support Counselor Ostroff's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Stoma. This is Counselor Osenek.
Your worship, as you elude in your comments, this is a very successful business, and in this situation, for this planning application, I think the business is a victim of its own success, in that it is a large business now, it's getting lots of contracts, it's basically like outgrown the little area where it was, because it's not, all the surrounding land uses around it is not commercial, it's residential. And so for me, it's not following the definition of 3.1.7 of the official plan that allows for a home-based occupation. And my one question, I have two questions to staff. So my one question is, like, in light that home-based occupations are supposed to be operated by the occupant of the home, but in this case, the business owner does not live on the home, they're just using the land for their business? Like, how do we rationalize that then, in allowing them to continue as a home-based business when they don't actually work on the premises, like, they don't actually live on the premises at nighttime, and they never have since they moved into that site?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. So since this came to staff about a year and a half ago, it came through a complaint relative to the business operating not in compliance with the zoning. So as part of the regulatory process, we've been working with the property owner to bring them into compliance through this process of applications. Relative, you're typically correct, relative to home occupations. In this case, the zoning aspect of it would be dealing with this as a small-scale commercial business, and that's what it would be resoned to be, not to be considered as a home occupation. We haven't enforced on the non-compliance because we've been moving with the property owner towards this piece of compliance relative to the zoning applications.
Thank you. And if council tonight doesn't give the designation for small business use, then how long would they have to vacate that premises and find somewhere else? Like, when you have your grass really long, you don't have to cut it by tomorrow, you're given a warning in your mailbox, and you're given two weeks to cut the grass. So in this case, the building and licensing staff would give the business how long to find a more appropriate location to move their business?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. As indicated before, I think to some extent it would depend on whether the property owner decides to appeal council's decision, and while that matter is under appeal, I'm not sure that we would want to pursue active enforcement in case the tribunal decides to support the staff recommendation and not the decision of council relative through the appeal process. We haven't been in a situation where we have, in the time that I've been in this role, where we have forced a property owner to relocate their business, so relative to, you know, what would be a reasonable amount of time for the business to find a new piece of property, you know, develop a relocation plan, we'd want to be reasonable relative to that. I don't have a specific timeframe in mind, and we don't have a comparable that I could provide to you.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear, make the business find a place, you know, in two weeks' time or anything, that they would have lots of lead time to try to find a more appropriate place. It is important to me that we have to protect neighborhoods, we have to protect, you know, residential areas, and there are nothing but residents surrounding this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shelton?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just down the street from me, there is a shop, which is in a residential area, and it is allowed, I understand, through grandfathering. Could I ask you, when Portsmouth was incorporated into the city of Kingston, it would appear that this business was grandfathered. Is there in a city a right of grandfathering and that zoning would become compliant because the business already existed? Is that any kind of rule?
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you. So as part of the initial complaint that came in, staff would be reviewing the property against its existing permission. So if something is a use that's existing prior to the passing of the zoning bylaw, when it was originally passed, there can be some grandfathering that's associated with that as long as there's not a change of use. In this case, we weren't able to determine that the use existed prior to the passing of the bylaw, or else they wouldn't be going through the process that they've gone through relative to bringing it into compliance.
I see, thank you. It's always been a bit of a confusion for me, and I am going to not agree with the planning committee. In the countryside, there has long been this sort of difficulty, where people have created a business, and then over time, people have moved in, they've bought pieces of land, and we've had various provincial governments, sometimes they try to put a stop to it, and other times it's allowed. And as a city, we haven't been encouraging countryside residential, because in the long run, it does create a number of problems for a city servicing these properties that are very far apart from each other, but not far enough apart that a commercial business doesn't upset people. So it's a constant, it's not going to end with this one. But it had been there for a long time, and I would rather it be part of the zoning for the city of Kingston with good regulations around it than make it something that is appeal, can be appealed and might well lose. It's interesting, our attitudes are always a little different around a commercial property than a home. If we were talking about someone's home not being zoned for a home, I think our whole attitude would be quite different, but there seems to be something with commercial that does make it a little easier to say no at times. But this has been around for a long time, and as I say, I'd rather that, as a city, it's zoned properly and can be controlled. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Counselor Bohm?
Your worship, and through you, a little bit with this one too, because it's very easy to see both sides of the arguments here. You know, on one side, you've got a successful business employing up to 12 people at times. It seems also that, from my understanding, is a lot of the concern is that, not necessarily the business in its form right now, but is this going to allow it to grow and kind of maybe exceed what it is? And that's sort of the feeling that I'm getting from a lot of the correspondence I've read, is that if this is approved and becomes compliant, are they going to be able to kind of grow it beyond what it is right now? The other side is the residential concerns of, you know, should have been there in the first place and whatever. And to Counselor Shelton's points, it's almost like allowing these home-based businesses is essentially in the rural area... is essentially in the rural area, doing what we do in the urban area, which is kind of creating incubator businesses. So it's something where you can have these businesses grow, and then sort of, you know, at times, they, I guess, exceed the bounds of where they originally were at. But at the same time, in this instance, I think there's some outlying complications here where if we deny this, I would guess that they're probably going to appeal it, and they probably have a pretty good case to appeal it. And the other factor of that is, how's that going to look when we have, you know, again, our staff recommending it, and then council saying no if it's, if it's turned down, and then going through the whole appeal process? What's that going to do to the business itself? So, I mean, there's a lot of factors to weigh in here. There, I don't know what the right answer is here. I'm kind of in my mind trying to think as I look at this, is, is there another way to go through this? Is there another way to kind of have a second crack at this and make it so it can all fit within, within the bounds so that this whole thing could kind of come to fruition, stay in its current form, work, and have the residents sort of be placated as well? And I don't know what the answer is there, that's what makes this so difficult.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Hutchinson?
I just had the speakers summed it up. It's a question of how you weight the provisions, right? There are provisions that say no, or you can understand why this, this business was illegal for a long time, if, depending how you define the, of it and its operation surroundings and, and the zoning, right? So, I mean, I find that hard to ignore, okay? And on the, on the other hand, we're not really in the, the business of making business more difficult, right? But I think, and why, the other thing that makes it so difficult for us to decide and for the committee and staff, is you're weighting these factors. And some people, of course, are going to wait certain factors more than others. As Counselor Shel pointed out, you know, if it's in a residential area, or what is now a residential area, more residential than it was, and, you know, and then there's the claim, which I will ask staff about, my one question, is it's indicated that, what was it? The, well, first of all, did they, is it correct to say that they were operating illegally? It seemed to me to be an awfully gray proposition, but possibly accurate.
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, so as I previously indicated, this came to staff's attention by way of a complaint related to the nature of the business that was operating, and it does not currently comply with the A1 restricted zoning that's on the property in terms of the use. So it is not a compliant use at this point in time.
And then the other claim is that they are expect, businesses are at certain point, like they've been like incubators, to use Counselor Bohm's terminology, is not really, but you can understand where you got that. Are they, are they expected to move? Is that part of the general policies? When I was reading through some of the stuff, it seemed to be one of the claims that was there. So if a business starts off, it grows, it sort of outgrows its situation, are they expected to move as a matter of course, in order that the city can maintain its zoning integrity? And people get what they expect when they move into a residential area, for example?
Ms. Agnew?
Through you, the rural policies of the official plan, and that's the designation of land use that applies to this property, it contemplates in the rural area a variety of uses, including residential and small-scale commercial industrial uses as well. So given that Burbank Road is designated also as an arterial road in the official plan, that type of road is typically envisioned to be able to carry some of the, the more commercial or industrial types of businesses, just based on the fact that there's transportation infrastructure in place to be able to support businesses of that nature, as opposed to more of like a local rural road. Staff's interpretation of that section of the official plan, relative to what it says overall, when you read all the sections about what we want to try to see and encourage within the rural area of the City of Kingston, it does look at, it uses the terminology to look at, you know, newer, smaller scale businesses. I don't believe the intent of the official plan specifically was to say that when businesses are X number of years old, that they need to necessarily move. It really base, is based on looking at the operational characteristics. So there's certainly a number of established businesses that are in the rural area that are far beyond their infancy, that continue to exist in those locations and are compatible with the other rural land uses that are in the area. And it would be staff's opinion that this would be no different, even though it's not a brand-new business, the operational characteristics of it meet the criteria relative to it being described as a small-scale rural business.
So what I, that is, it's a question of whether you think the business is going to be much bigger, or significantly bigger than it is now. And that's the basis, as a couple of other councils pointed out, that's the basis of the, of the concerns.
Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you, I just clarify, so staff's that relative to making the determination that this meets with the intention of the official plan policies for the rural area is based on the fact that it would be subject to a site-specific rezoning, which is the application you have before you, that significantly manages the ability of this business not to grow any larger than it is, down to the point of regulating the number of full-time employees that can work at the business. So that puts a lot of parameters in place to give, or gave staff a comfort that this would remain a limited business in terms of its, its scale in particular, and that's why we put the zoning framework together that we did.
I'm no further ahead than I was. So I'm, I have to say, I'm inclined to vote for the denial, because I think there are certain understandings, when you go and you know that your zoning doesn't fit what you're doing, at, at some point, you know, the, the clock is going to chime, right? So, but, you know, if anybody else has got anything else to say, I'm more willing to hear it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that, that wishes to speak? Okay, so just before we call the vote, just so everyone's clear, that we are voting on the recommendation from Planning Committee to deny. So what that means is if you vote yes, that would be to deny the zoning bylaw amendment. If you vote no, and it's defeated, then there would be the opportunity for somebody on council to then put forward the, the opposing recommendation, which in case would be approval. So is everybody, so is everybody clear on what a yes means and what a no means? Okay. So I'm going to call the vote on deferred motion number one. And that carries by a vote of seven to six. Okay. So we will now move on to reports. First, we have report number 68 from the CAO. I'm just going to, Mr. Clerk. Okay, thank you. So just as the clerk has advised, what we will do is, is immediately deal with new motion number three, which is essentially the justification for the, for the denial of the zoning bylaw amendment. So that's new motion number three, moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor Neal. It's quite technical, so I'm not going to read it. But Counselor Osterhoff, you have the floor, if there's anything else that you wish to add or to say related to this before we call the vote on the motion. Okay? Okay, so essentially, this is, just so everyone's clear, this is now the accompanying motion that sets out the planning rationale for why we have denied the zoning bylaw amendment. Okay, so we will now call the vote. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of nine to four. Okay, so now we will flip back to reports. First, we will look at report number 68 from the CAO. And just to note that when we approve the added, that we also added an additional clause number nine. So ask for that report, please.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that report number 68 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so we have separated clause number eight for Counselor Bohm's pecuniary interest. Are there any other separations? Counselor Neal? Seven. Counselor Stroud? Clause two.
Two and four.
Okay, seeing no further separations, we will first vote on the balance of the items. So first, we have clause one, patio applications, Santor Brewing Incorporated. Clause three, award of contract, 1/2019 model year crew cab dump truck. Clause five, request for noise exemption, MTO Highway 401, Kingston Road 38 interchange construction. Clause six, request for noise exemption, construction, Kingston Airport Expansion Project. And clause nine, award of contract, road repairs, various locations. Okay, we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, clause number two, award of contract, 1/2019 model year forestry aerial truck. Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. I read the executive summary, as we all did, for this. I'm just going to quote one line here. It says, "This unit is a replacement for an existing unit that has reached its life expectancy." Well, I got to say, the, the first thing I noticed about this file was the price tag of $271,000, over a quarter million dollars, and then I started reading the fine print. So then I saw a replacement for an existing unit that it's reached its life expectancy. So my question to staff is, what does that mean exactly? Reached its life expectancy?
Mr. Keach?
Your worship, I guess the simplest way would, would be to say the truck is worn out, it's fairly old, and, so this, this is an aerial device that workers are up in trimming trees, and the main concern is not the chassis, the motor, it's the aerial device and some safety issues with it, and we need to make sure that it functions properly. And that, that's basically why we're looking at changing it, safety reasons, and it is down so much that we actually can't complete the work.
Right. And it's on the bucket, and our, and the controls for the bucket, I guess, are unreliable, and therefore, that's what it means by reached its life expectancy, like it, it doesn't function very efficiently anymore.
Exactly.
Okay. So the follow-up question would be, could we get another year out of it, and what would the implications of that be?
So sort of off the top of my head, I, I think the first one would be safety issues, and I know that we've had some issues with drift of the, the bucket when it's up in the air, and that's not a situation that we would want to be in. I think best case, you would, you would get part of the time working on it, a part of the time it would be down. Worst case is, we'd park it and not do the work.
Thought I had to do my due diligence on this, because that's, it's an awful lot of money for a single-purpose vehicle, and, and I know that this work does need to be done from time to time, but I, but the, I got some sticker shock from, from that, and that was the reason for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call the vote on clause two, please. And that carries by a vote of 11 to one. Okay, clause four, Queen's University Reunion Street Festival. Counselor Stroud?
Simple on this file. So if you've read the, the supporting documents, you'll see that the Reunion Street Festival, similar to before, will be held on Union Street and some of the main campus area. And so I, just briefly, I really like this festival. I think it was a really innovative way that Queen's came up with to deal with the, the problem of out-of-control partying at, at the time of homecoming. So I like the name, I like the fact that Union Street is, is not essential to circulation of traffic at that time, so its closure is not really a major concern for my residents. And also, having toured it before, when it was up and running in, in years past, I was satisfied that it did divert a lot of the, of the, you know, evening festivities to an area that can be controlled. So I, I really like this, and I, I would like council to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We call the clause four. And that carries. Clause seven, award of contract, airport runway liquid de-icing sprayer. Counselor Neal?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question. I've been, I've missed some connection, connecting flights in the past because of canceled flights out of Toronto, and I've spoken to other people that, that has happened. Is that, as I understand it, a de-icing issue, not so much at the Toronto end, but at the Kingston end? So this may indeed improve or reduce those cancellations? Is that accurate?
Mr. Reed?
For Your Worship. It, it's a mixed bag. If you looked at the statistics and a breakdown of those for the last season, we were responsible for two of the 162 missed flights here. And you can lay the blame on the, most of these delays or missed flights on NAV Canada, the controller of our air services in Canada, and the fact that in Toronto, they are insufficiently staffed. And whenever there is any weather in Toronto, they immediately impose what is called a ground stop on traffic. And that then affects all of the smaller airports like London and Waterloo, Kingston, Timmins, Sudbury, North Bay, we don't get any traffic because they're going to be landing triple sevens and seven eight sevens, et cetera, rather than dash eight one hundreds and three hundreds. But this piece of equipment is essential to maintaining our current very good record. We don't have this piece of equipment at the moment. We rented one last year. Here's an opportunity to, to use five cent dollars and purchase this piece of essential winter maintenance equipment.
Thank you. I will, I'll bloat myself and say, yes, I'm voting for better, fewer cancellations, but I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll call the vote on clause seven. And that carries. Okay, clause eight is separated for Counselor Bohm. So we'll call the vote on consulting services for intersection design. And that carries. Okay, report number 69 from Heritage Kingston.
I have here report 69 from Heritage Kingston, moved and seconded for council's consideration.
Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shel, that report number 69 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So we will call the vote on the items as a whole, unless anyone would like them, anything separated. Seeing none, we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Next up is report number 70 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
I rise to submit the EITP, report number 70, moved and seconded.
moved and seconded for council's consideration.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Neil, that report number seventy from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so first we will call the vote, or we separated clause one, rather, because of councillor Bohm's pecuniary interest. So first up is, number one, approval of the asset management policy. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Then item two, approval of the twenty seventeen Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum Report Card. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report number seventy-one from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
It's my pleasure to present Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee for consideration by council.
Moved by council, seconded by councillor Shell, that report number seventy-one from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so councillor Neil has asked that item number two be separated. If there are no other separations, we'll first vote on the balance of the items. So clause one is the allocation policy updates. Clause three, appointment to the Mayor's Arts Awards Nominations Working Group. Clause four, twenty seventeen Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee Report Card. And clause five, recognition of David Jackson, former committee chair, Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee. So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause two, a pilot project to promote local music and musicians. Councillor Neil?
Thank you very much. Thought I needed to speak for a couple of minutes so that Colin had a reason for being here tonight. I just wanted to say, I totally support this. I, it, it's something that some other communities, Ottawa and other communities, do to encourage local musicians. And it's a motion, I can't remember if it was at the very beginning of this term or at the end of the last term, but it passed unanimously. But like a lot of good ideas, it was a lot simpler in theory than it was in practice. And our Arts Advisory Committee has worked hard with the director and cultural services to come up with a working proposal, which this indeed is. So it'll be good to walk by the rink and not hear advertising from a radio station, but to actually hear some Canadian musicians in the background and such. So I think this is a really good idea, and I hope it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call on clause two. And that carries. Okay. We have nothing from committee of the whole this evening. And we have a number of information reports. So if you have a question, please just raise your hand as I read them through. Number one, mid-year update, Queen City partnership work. Number two, mid-year update, workforce development and in-migration strategy. Councillor Holland?
Thank you. I do have a question. I'm grateful to receive this update. The, there has been a lot of work in the past year, especially having to do with some of the Say Hello campaign, for example. Some of the initiatives, just sort of broadly speaking, to develop a cultural, a culture of inclusion in the city of Kingston. And I'm wondering, the recommendations, the work that's taken place so far, a lot of it is, seems to be targeted on talent recruitment, economic, like matching a potential, sort of KEDCO-ish type initiatives. And I'm just wondering if we are bringing the work of the, the, all of the good work on inclusion, anti-oppression, anti-racism that we've been talking about over the last while into this project as well?
Mr. Dejade?
Thank you, your worship, to the councillor. Absolutely, yes. There is an inclusive workplace working group that focuses on inclusion and diversity in the workplace. That particular working group is working on a diversity and inclusion charter. That'll be a process where businesses can sign up and commit to certain levels of activity. And then the potential to be recognized for exceptional efforts to promote diversity.
Thank you. So along that, then, for, let's say, employers who weren't willingly signing up for something like this, are there any measures involved that would be educational? Let's say, for example, I know that Keys does do a lot of work and other organizations trying to introduce, trying to educate employers. Because, I mean, so many of the employers in Kingston are small businesses who may not have the resources or the time to devote themselves to something like signing on. So are there other educational components as well that would be a part of this? For, let's say, it does mention medium and larger-sized businesses, but let's just say for the small business community.
Your worship, through the councils, the working group is working on toolkits for small businesses to participate. You referenced a project with Keys. One of the projects that we received some funding for is the PIN program, which is the professional internship for newcomers, which again is delivered by Keys and our behalf through funds that we acquired to promote those coming from other communities that have designations to give them work experience in businesses of all sizes, large and small.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, number three, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of June twenty eighteen. Number four, report on agreements executed under delegated approval and signing authority, April first to June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Number five, delegated authority heritage approvals. Number six, funding impacts cancellation of provincial cap and trade program. Number seven, twenty eighteen priorities. I'm sorry, councillor Stroud? Was that for number six or number seven? Number seven, twenty eighteen priority status matrix Q two update. Councillor Stroud?
So at the top of each page, it's a nice chart divided by, by a strategic priority. As you know, we have six. So, and I think I've asked this exact question before, but maybe, maybe it was slightly different. So it shows, it says priority status, status matrix sorted by prime priority. And I don't see the double, the tree canopy initiative in here under any of the categories. And I'm wondering, is that because it's not a prime priority? Or what's the reason that it doesn't show up in the priority status matrix?
CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Detail here to go through tonight, but I can say that it is a priority, and it should be listed on here. So we will, we will review that, and we'll report on it appropriately the next time if it's not here.
Great, because I think I have seen it before, but it's not here today. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, yes, councillor Neil? Number eight, update on community bike share program. Councillor Neil?
Thank you. This was a very popular program last year. I know it's part of our Active Transportation Master Plan, having a bike share program. As I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the problem this year was that the company had some bikes that were recalled, and therefore, they didn't have sufficient stock to fulfill the contract earlier in the year as hoped. Is that an accurate?
Commissioner Hurdle?
Is that an accurate statement?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So there, there is a, or there was a problem with the locking system on the bicycles. And they were actually not able to have the bicycles in place in July as we anticipated. So, yes, you are correct. So Kingston's not the only community that's obviously being affected by this. So we're looking at September. And of course, this is a permanent program. It's not just a pilot program at this point.
Because I am aware in Kelowna and some that have contracts with the same company, that in fact, they do have bikes in service. So I'm looking forward to those beautiful orange bikes being on our corners again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we have no information reports from members of council. So on to miscellaneous of business. We have a number of motions. First, that the resignation of Jill Banting from the Arts Advisory Committee Public Art Working Group be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Shell. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Number two, that the resignation of Theresa Karas-Samu from the Arts Advisory Committee Public Art Working Group be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Holland. Please vote. And that carries. Number three, that notwithstanding section three point one point four subsection five of the illumination of city facilities policy, Kingston City Council approved the illumination of City Hall and Springer Market Square on September first, twenty eighteen, for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. Please vote. And that carries. Number four, that is requested by Kids Inclusive Kingston Health Sciences Centre, that council proclaim September ninth, twenty eighteen, as International Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Holland. Please vote. And that carries. Number five, that is requested by the Pakistan Canada Association of Kingston, that council proclaim August fourteenth, twenty eighteen, as Pakistan Day in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Osterhoff. Please vote. And that carries. Number six, that is requested by the Pakistan Canada Association of Kingston, council raise the flag on August fourteenth, twenty eighteen, in Confederation Park for Pakistan Independence Day. Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. Please vote. And that carries. Number seven, that is requested by SIVA Canada, that council proclaim October eleventh, twenty eighteen, as World Sight Day in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Number eight, that is requested by Canadian Forces Base Kingston, council raise the flag on August twenty seventh, twenty eighteen, in Confederation Park for Canadian Armed Forces Logistics Branch fiftieth anniversary. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. New motion number one, moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Hutcheson. Whereas fostering open government is a strategic priority, where citizens have the right to access documents and proceedings to allow for effective public involvement in and oversight of civic affairs. And whereas the Ombudsman of Ontario was given the broad advice, when in doubt, open the meeting. And whereas the Amberley Gavill Limited Report of July twenty eighteen exposed some knowledge gaps in council and staff concerning the correct balance between open government and the occasional need for closed meetings. Whereas the Municipal Act says in twenty-two thirty-nine point two, section twelve, if municipality or a local board receives a report from a person referred to in clause two thirty-nine A or B, reporting his or her opinion and the reasons for it, that a meeting or part of a meeting that was the subject matter of an investigation by that person appears to have been closed to the public contrary to section two thirty-nine or to procedural bylaw under subsection two thirty-eight, municipality or local board, as the case may be, shall pass a resolution stating how it intends to address the report. Therefore, be it resolved, the council will address the report by directing staff to return to Administrative Policies Committee in the first quarter of twenty nineteen with new recommendations and guidelines that meet or improve on the recommendations of the Ombudsman's Sunshine Law Handbook for Closed Meetings, including but not limited to the following. Number one, an education component for the new council with correct knowledge to prevent errors of what should and should not be in a closed meeting that have occurred in the past from being repeated in the future. And that includes at a minimum, A, correct, clear and useful definitions and examples of the legal importance and relationship between motions, resolutions and votes to confirmation bylaws; B, correct, clear and useful definitions and examples distinguishing between a procedural matter, giving direction to staff and making a substantive decision in a closed meeting; C, a finer distinction between what is allowed to be in camera and what should be done in camera, such that even though legislation allows for a closed meeting, it may not be necessary to have a closed meeting where the extensive reason for a closed meeting does not exist and where no harm would be incurred by the city if the meeting were to be an open session. Number two, recommendations to make confirmation bylaws more precise, explicit and open. Number three, recommendations for a more thorough and more accountable audio and video recording policy for votes and deliberations in closed meetings. Number four, recommendations for releasing of closed meeting material, votes and deliberations after an appropriate time. Councillor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is my belief of what we need to do according to the Municipal Act. And based on what I've also read in the Ombudsman's Sunshine Law Handbook, their recommendations. These are the questions that I've had in the past and some of the recommendations that were in that book. And we're hoping that we can meet or exceed the new regime that's being imposed upon us. And I reserve the right to speak at the end if there's any other questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor Hutcheson?
Thank you, your worship. This, this motion is before us, of course, because of the Amberley Gavill Report that indicated that the passing of the motions concerning the Cat West lands in April two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen were in fact illegal. And we voted to receive that report along with one from Merritt and Burleson's last meeting, I believe. And I'm just contextualizing this for the public. I'm sure we all know this. One of the things that come forward that is difficult and hopefully will be addressed by this motion and an educational program is the difference between those kind of votes that can be in camera and those that cannot. And particularly that you can have a vote on a procedural matter or giving direction to staff, but you cannot conclude business in camera. You cannot make what Amberley Gavill called a substantive decision, that is, one that isn't procedural or giving direction. And we conclude an agreement or a deal or whatever. And so that's been a big problem for us as a council, and we need to clear that up. And so that's why I think this motion is really important. We, and so it addresses this because it talks about what is allowed in camera and what should be done. Should be done in camera is a further question, whether we have to be in camera as much as perhaps we are. Then there's a question of confirmation bylaws, which the Air Burleson Report indicated was that when you voted for a confirmation bylaw, you were not only voting for what had occurred in public, but that which had happened in camera. Now, to me, and perhaps I'm mistaken, but to me, that results in a patently absurd situation where you'd have to ask the clerk, will you separate? Say you vote against something, or you vote for it, and it's turned down or whatever. You have to ask clerk to separate it out so you can vote against that part which took place in camera, which the public has no idea what you're even about. And, and then, then you can, you know, vote for what's left of the confirmation bylaw. So I don't know how that's supposed to work, that particular claim. So we need to straighten that sort of thing out. So that's why I seconded and support this motion because it does contribute to more open and transparent and self-educated governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor?
Very quickly, I'll support this motion because I think it does give the next council, because that's when this will happen, an opportunity to reflect with some so- that's when this will happen, an opportunity to reflect with some sober second thought at a distance, two very conflicting recommendations that came out of this whole experience. So, for that reason, I think this is a good opportunity. We're going to have, I will say at least four, but I'm sure more than four new councillors in the next council, and my only concern is they may have no idea what this in fact involves, because it now will have covered three or four terms of council with this situation. But regardless, I think it's a good opportunity for us to have a sober second thought and to try to come up with something a little less controversial and more assured in decisions that we make moving forward. So, I'm going to support this motion.
Thank you. All the vote on new motion number one. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Okay, new motion number two, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Holland. Whereas we just finished a provincial election in which our new bylaw number 2014-16 was applied, and whereas there was some confusion around the wording suggesting some clarification is needed, and whereas in past elections, through bylaw or as accepted courtesy, signs were not placed in or around parks or cemeteries, this was not the case in the recent election. Therefore, be it resolved that staff be requested to thoroughly review bylaw number 2014-16 with public input to clarify the policy of signs on public property and to clearly restrict signs bordering municipal parks or cemeteries, and that a proposed amended bylaw be brought to Administrative Policies Committee no later than Q2 2019, enabling a council decision well in advance of 2019 federal election. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I put this motion forward and I appreciate that staff have already begun a process to try to, try to deal with this. And I appreciate that the municipal election, unless we want to act like Premier Ford, it would be pretty unfair of us to try and alter the regulations prior to the municipal election. But I think we definitely need to clarify. There's this one section of the bylaw, Section 8, I believe, that says there will, no signs will be allowed on public property. And then, there's a couple of other sections that explain how to go about legally putting signs on public property. And so, it was somewhat confusing in the provincial election, all the way to the point of one campaign office being told they had to pick up all of their signs that they put out the night before, and the other campaigns continuing to plant signs without that same message. So, it was confusing, to say the least. The other thing that is, I wanted to add is that in the past, it's always been my understanding or at least consideration that, and maybe this was just customs in usage and a courtesy, but we didn't plant signs next to a cemetery and we didn't plant signs surrounding a park. And this time around, in the provincial election, both those things occurred. So, I think we need some stronger clarity for those issues so that, so that we can more sensibly use signs. Personally, and in the last two elections with the agreement of Ed Smith, who was running against me, we agreed to no signs on public property. And I think that's personally, with the sole exception of rural properties, because it isn't sensible to have to force signs to go all the way back to the farmhouse in order to have them legal. But within the urban core, within the urban boundary, I think saying no signs on public property, as many communities do, isn't a bad idea. It means if you see a sign, it's meaningful. It means the resident or the landlord at that particular property supports you as a candidate. It isn't just sending out a sign crew to plant signs, multiple signs, two feet apart all the way down a street. And for that reason, I hope that those considerations are made prior to the federal election, and that's why this is timed the way it is, so administrative services can reflect upon that. I will say, though, this is something that I would intend for the urban, within the urban boundary and not in rural parts of our city. So, I hope that this passes and that those considerations are made in drawing up another amended bylaw. It's my understanding, and the clerks can confirm this, it's my understanding that there will be a clarification statement or going out to all candidates in the municipal election. Is that accurate?
Mister Clerk? Through you, Mr. Mayor, you are correct. That should be posted this weekend.
Excellent. Thank you much.
Thank you, sister speak. Counselor Bohm?
Your worship, and through you, I report this. I just wanted to add one caveat, and it could be that somebody would look at the no public use and say that that just gives the incumbent more of an advantage because they've already made all those relationships. So, that could be kind of hard for somebody that's trying to challenge somebody in the seat to say like, you pretty much can only put it on private property, just food for thought when it comes to the policy of some of the criticisms that could get.
So, we'll let that go. I just, we're not actually, what changes we are or are not going to make to our signed bylaw, this is just a motion asking staff to go and to clarify and to bring forward this for public input. But is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion only? So, not debating whether or not we need to change the bylaw, but just what is before us. Okay, so, we will call the vote then on new motion number two. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Okay, we've already dealt with new motion number three. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, seeing none, Mister Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Counselor Shell, that the minutes of City Council Meeting Number 2018-17, held Tuesday, July 10th, 2018, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have no tabling of documents. We have a number of communications. Is there any other business? Deputy Mayor Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. I have a quick extra motion of business. Eight years ago this month, Kingston was at the center of North American and world affairs. It was August 18th, 1938. Our community was only 23,000 residents. Kingston was suffering greatly from the Great Depression and approximately 1,500 Kingstonians were on relief. For them and thousands across Canada and the US, there was only bleakness. But then, hope and confidence of a better tomorrow arrived. US President Franklin Roosevelt, the leader whose fireside chats had given hope, comfort and resolve to people across our continent, was greeted by thousands here. His speech that day was historic, a high water mark in Canadian-American relations. In recent months, your worship, Mayor Patterson, and colleagues from Kingston Economic Development and Tourism Kingston City Staff have joined with their counterparts in Watertown to mark this a special anniversary. Roosevelt and Prime Minister Mackenzie King also opened the international bridge at Ivy League. Friends in spirit of Roosevelt and Mackenzie King will be hosting a large delegation from Watertown and area on August 18th. A ceremony will be held at Queen's University at the Agnes Etherington Arts Centre at around 1:00 PM to mark this anniversary and continuing friendship between Canada and the US. I encourage all councillors to join us. As Roosevelt said in Kingston that day, "We as good neighbors are true friends." So, Happy Canada-US Friendship Day, which is the same day. And thank you, your worship, for allowing me to speak for a few minutes. I hope you can all attend. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, seeing no other business, we will now reconvene in our committee of the whole closed meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, so, folks, we're going to do, we're going to do three votes. The first is going to be a vote to rise with reporting from closed session. Second vote is going to be to extend the meeting. Third vote is going to be on the vote in question. Okay, so, first, I'll ask for a vote to rise with reporting, please.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting and that the rules of bylaw number 2010-1 be waived and the city clerk report.
And that carries. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting to finish the agenda? Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Ossanik.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor George, that council approved the recommendations as amended contained in closed report number 18-187 with respect to Homestead Land Holdings Limited North Block Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application Appeals for the lands located at 5157 Queen Street and 18 Ontario Street/282 Ontario Street. One more, please.
And that carries by a vote of nine to four. Okay, so, with that, Mister Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that bylaws three through six be given their first and second reading. One more.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that Clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw four three readings. Because the deferred motion with respect to the property on Unity Road was approved, which meant that the denial was upheld, bylaw three has been withdrawn. So, therefore, I am going to start the bylaw voting process all over again with bylaw vote A, this time with the, with bylaw three removed. It's going to show on your screen, but I'm going to read it differently just for the sake of time. Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that bylaws four through six be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that Clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw four three readings.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Ossanik, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that bylaws one, two and four through six be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Osterhoff. And that carries for adjourn, and thank you very much.